Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting for Tuesday, July the 16th to order roll call.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Holst?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Mattson is absent. McCusker?
Here.
Shobloom?
Here.
And Mayor Robinson?
Yep. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting this evening. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Merrell, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That moves us to Item 5 this evening, Public Input. Citizens may speak to items not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And as it doesn't look like there's anyone here wishing to speak, we will move on to Item 6, which is Presentations. We'll have Senator Schmidt here to give us a legislative update from the past session up at the State House.
All right. Well, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, nice to see you tonight. I know we tried to do this a couple of months ago and caught you at the end of the meeting, or after the meeting, so I thought I'd err on the side of caution and get here early tonight. So a pleasure to be with you, and one of the, I guess, the enjoyable parts of this job is getting our work done on time and coming out and reporting to everybody what we've done. And I've been staying busy doing that for the last couple of months, making the rounds of the district. This is a big district, mind you. So all of Good, just about all of Goodhue County, all of Wabashaw, about the northern third of Winona, and just a little section of Dodge County keeps it got busy. So we're having a lot of fun. I just wanted to take a chance, I guess, to just formally say hello and introduce myself to the council here. Last year, we spent a lot of time door-knocking, and I think I made my way through Cannon Falls about six, seven times last year, and feel like I got to know just about every street and house in the town. And this year, I just want to really start, I guess, an open and consistent relationship with our school boards, city councils, county boards, that's, those local units of government in moving forward. So hopefully, this is the first of many conversations that we can have moving forward. Legislative session next year begins on February 25th, so perhaps we'll get a chance to visit before, between now and then. But in any event, I wanted to take just a quick minute just to talk about the 2013 legislative session and give you an overview as I see it, give you a chance to ask any questions you may have of me, and if there are any things that you'd like me to focus on moving ahead, I'd be happy to do that. In terms of our budget in 2013, I look at it as though we had a $3 billion budget problem to start the 2013 legislative session. A billion dollars in current-year deficit, another billion dollars in a school shift that was not accounted for, and then a billion dollars in inflation that, well, there's a long story there, but conveniently does not make its way into our budgeting process. It makes the budget look better, year in and year out. And that's something that we should take a look at moving forward. But $3 billion, and it's a sizable hole. It's fairly consistent with the budget problems that we've had over the last 10 years. And we got some good economic news about halfway through session. Minnesota's economic recovery is outpacing that of the rest of the country. In 2012, I think we had 3.5% growth, puts us fifth in the country. That means that we had more money coming into the state coffers, able to accelerate the payment, the payback on that school shift a little bit, and also paid down some of that, or actually revised the budget deficit number. So about a billion dollars was actually kind of taken care of just through economic growth during the session. But that left us with a pretty sizable hole of still $2 billion that's been recurring over the last 10 years. And of course, what we did is we raised some revenue, and a big chunk of that revenue is being invested in our schools, about $750 million in K-12 schools and in our colleges and universities in Minnesota, to help take pressure off of local property taxpayers to make up for what I view as a kind of a decade of under-investment. Per people funding has actually fallen about 12% over the last decade in Minnesota, time in which property taxes have approximately doubled. So that was something that we really wanted to take into account in the 2013 legislative session, take pressure off of our local communities, our school districts. I think we've hit the property tax button or pushed a lot of the state burden for balancing our budget down to local units of government, so that you had to hit the property tax button too often in the last 10 years. And I think that the budget that we have this year, for the first time in 10 years, it's balanced not just for the next two years, but for the next four years. And I think that that's really important, and I think it puts us in a position for the next 10 years to hopefully be running some modest surpluses, and hopefully we can have a conversation about real tax reform, because that's overdue in Minnesota. And perhaps we'll have an opportunity to cut taxes down the road. One thing that I think that we're very serious about this legislature and this governor is having an honest and open relationship with our local units of government. Instead of passing the buck down to you when times get tough up in the state government, I think we have to be honest about what it costs to run state and local governments and be honest about how we pay for that. And I hope that we're moving into a period where, you know, we're going to have some more consistency and predictability in our budgeting, that you'll have some room at the local level, that if you want to raise a levy for, you know, whether it's your schools for enhancements in technology or facilities, or at the city level to really focus on essential services, you'll be able to do that. And folks won't be property taxed out, so to speak. And I think that's really important. As we look at the things that we wanted to do this session, one was balancing that budget once and for all, and darn it, I think we did it. Secondly, it was, you know, getting our work done on time, and we had a House, a Governor and Senate, each had different ideas on how to deal with this budget, but at the end of the day, we got our work done on time, and I think that's something to be proud of. Those special sessions have become anything but special in recent years, and they've kind of become the norm from year in and year out. So this is hopefully the beginning of a new trend in Minnesota, where we're working together, getting our work done on time. Another big thing that we wanted to do, again, is just take pressure off of our local communities, and I think the decisions that we've made are going to do a lot of good for our local communities and particularly rural Minnesota. A thing I'd like to add, I've been saying this a lot, is in terms of economic development, Minnesota has a tradition, rightly or wrongly, of sending a lot of money up to the Iron Range and investing in economic development up there. And we have a pretty strong track record. But I'm very proud of the opportunity that presented itself this session, the fact that we were able to capture $400 million of investments, pay-as-you-go investments, for the Rochester Destination Medical, I'm sorry, Destination Medical Center concept. At the end of the day, that could leverage $6 billion of investment in southeastern Minnesota. And I just think, well, the footprint of Mayo is expanding, and they wanted to have this kind of private investment, public-private partnerships somewhere in the United States, whether it's Florida, Arizona, or Minnesota. And I'm proud to say that they're going to be expanding here in Minnesota. That could be 30,000 new jobs in southeastern Minnesota in the next 20 years. So that's going to be a huge economic driver, and I like to say that I think southeastern Minnesota really made out as the winner in this legislative session when you look at the investments we're making in rural communities, schools, cities, and darn it, that Rochester area and related economies thereof. Another thing that I think we did a good job of is, well, we were able to capture a little funding for transportation and slowly but surely making that Highway 52 corridor into the freeway that it deserves to be. I think that the County 9, Highway 52 interchange that we're going to be able to invest in is going to make a world of difference for safety. I know you guys probably wanted a little bit different outcome further north in town here, and for better or worse, that's the best that we were able to justify on a cost-benefit basis at this point, but hopefully funds will be available down the road to make investments, to turn that interchange into something more meaningful for the city. And I know that you've got a crosswalk on County 9 there that I think is going to be helpful for folks crossing. I'm a big biker, so I know what it's like, you know, you finish that Cannon Valley Trail coming from Red Wing, you finish there, and a lot of folks will access the trail or the park from across the street. And I think making sure that we, well, we have common sense safeguards in place with that crosswalk is going to be helpful. So I guess I've probably touched a lot of the bases there in rapid succession, but I just wanted to go over some of the highlights. I think a couple of things that are, don't catch headlines, that are important, the sales tax exemption for cities and counties. It doesn't seem like a big deal, but this is going to save you guys a lot of money, year in and year out in your budgeting. I think almost $200 million in the state budget was devoted to that. It doesn't make sense to, you know, to be, for the state to be charging the city a sales tax on goods and services it purchases. So that's something that we heard from a lot of our communities about and were able to deliver on that. I guess I could go on and on here, but I just wanted to report back here, introduce myself formally to this body, and hopefully start a conversation over the next few years about what we're doing in St. Paul, what we can do better, and what your needs are and how we can better serve you. So let's hopefully keep the channels of communication open. All right, I'm going to take a break and catch my breath, but if you have any questions, put me on the hot seat, I'd love to answer them.
Well, first off, I'd say thanks for coming in this evening. You know, we tried to come in once before and it just didn't work out, but, you know, you're welcome to come in and give us updates, I mean, because it lets everybody know what's actually going on up there. I mean, you hear stuff in the media, but the media's not, you know, they're going to say what they want to say about things, so if we can get it from the horse's mouth, then we're, you know, it's a lot better off.
I guess that takes me the horse, but all right. Mr. Ed, maybe. All right, yeah. Any questions at all? Otherwise, you know, never hesitate to shoot me a line or call our office.
I do have one thing, as you know, we're having an interchange put in here on the south end of town.
That's right.
Part of that project was also supposed to include an overpass, and if you can do anything to get MINDOT, because dealing with MINDOT is, dealing with a moving target.
Sure.
We can get them help, because they keep changing the parameters of when and how we can accomplish getting that.
Sure. And that was a project I alluded to, and you want to be able to connect two sides of town on either side of the highway. And I completely get where the city's coming from while you're frustrated with not having an overpass. I'm not going to defend the decision. I've been explained to it a number of times, you know, it really came down to a cost-benefit decision, and rightly or wrongly, those dollars were utilized other places in the corridor. And that's good, but I think moving forward, we've got to figure out a way to grow the pie for transportation funding in Minnesota. We have, you guys know this, we've got a queue of projects that are just not getting funded, and the needs are accelerating, and the, I guess, the deferred maintenance that we're seeing pile up, you know, from year in and year out, is really starting to catch up with us. So I'm hoping the 2014 legislative session is going to be devoted to infrastructure. We don't get back in there until February 25th, and we may be done by Easter next year, who knows? I mean, we want to get our work done and be real focused next year. But we're going to have a big bonding bill probably, a targeted bonding bill. We're going to have, hopefully, a good discussion about transportation funding that's going to allow us to grow that pie and accelerate investments and projects. If we're able to do that, you know, hopefully we're able to do some of these interchanges and intersections the right way initially and make the investments and anticipate growth. I mean, you look at that Highway 52 corridor, I mean Rochester, and you've got Twin Cities here, and you've got this big investment down at Mayo Clinic in Rochester. We're going to have more traffic coming here, we're going to have more people living in this high-growth corridor. Let's invest not just for now, but let's invest for the future and anticipate growth and need, and I just assumed do it right the first time. So I'm going to be talking a lot about trying to turn this corridor into a freeway and making the necessary investments we need to, and, you know, hopefully we get some traction on that discussion, because we do need to figure out how to better fund transportation in Minnesota, and hopefully that's a conversation we can have next year. Sorry, you asked a simple question, I just go on and on here, so sorry about that. I'll try to be brief if there's any other questions, but...
Well, the only question I had for you, Bill brought up the overpass out there. Some of our challenges we've had dealing with MINDOT is, it's a little frustrating, because a couple of years ago, we brought up the fact that we'd like a right-turn lane into Cannonball and Super America and stuff, and they said that that just wouldn't work, or it wouldn't work out, or something. And what was so amazing to me is then we put the overpass in at Hampton, and we get a right-turn lane to Little Oskars up there. So that's the kind of things that have kind of frustrated us. But I also, Aaron, thank Matt for his work on our crossing down there, and I also brought up the fact that we would have liked two crossings, and we also would have liked a sign at the top of the hill that said pedestrian area. So I brought that up to him to still keep that in mind, so Aaron can call and bug you once in a while about that.
She's going to give you an inch and you want a mile.
Yeah, isn't that terrible?
No, I don't think you're asking for too much at all here. So well, one thing I've learned in dealing with our agencies is we have really good people, really competent people, but they don't live in our communities always, and we understand our communities better than they do. And if we have a vision for what a corridor should look like, or a project, or an intersection, or a crosswalk, and we know that we're right, we've got to just continue to make that point. And, you know, Aaron, I think you did a great job of working, you know, with our office, and together we're able to really articulate why the crosswalks were needed. And I think in dealing with MINDOT or other agencies in the future, I mean, if you're convinced that there's a better approach to what's being proposed, you know, stick with it, just continue to communicate. And, I mean, that's one thing that we're able to do in our office, is, you know, we can make a little bit of noise and get folks to kind of pay attention, and I'll always do that. I mean, we want to make sure any investment we're making, we're doing it right the first time, so...
Right.
Yeah, I know, I'm hoping to get a little sign for the winery out on Highway 52, so we can bring some of those motorists into Cannon Falls, and I don't think it's asking too much to get a sign at the top of the hill for the crosswalk either. So those are a couple of requests that we can make over the summer here.
Yeah, thank you for all your help.
Absolutely. And I should probably just mention, I don't know if I reported this back to you guys at all, maybe I had, but in terms of my committee assignments, you know, it's kind of like going to high school or college. I mean, you can't focus on everything, so you've got to pick your classes or pick your committees. And the areas that I've been assigned to are four areas, Energy and Environment Committee, and they gave me the gavel on the Game and Fish Subcommittee. So if anybody's really interested in promoting hunting or fishing, or you've got any squabbles or, you know, beefs with the N.R., let me know. Otherwise, also on the Agriculture, Rural Development, and Jobs Committee. And then there's a Finance Division that kind of funds about $6, $7 billion of investments in both of those, in those areas, you know, the, those committees. And then also the Bonding Committee, the Capital Investment Committee. So every other year in Minnesota, typically in even years, we have a sizable capital investment bill. I would challenge Cannon Falls to think if there's projects that are defensible, that are regional-based, that would be good investments for Minnesota to make in your community, let's think those through and talk about it, because, you know, I want to be able to represent our area and our needs well up in that committee. And so that keeps me busy, but I certainly do a lot of work with education and transportation, some other areas too, so never hesitate to let me know if you've got any concerns.
Did you say energy?
Yeah, Energy and Environment, that's right.
Okay. So then you can help the city and the school up here. What we need is a couple of wind generators in our industrial park to pay for our bills.
Is that right?
Yeah, you can work on that.
Well, let's have that conversation. You know, I signed up for this job, you guys got to keep me busy here, so, yeah, I'd be happy to talk some more about that.
Yeah.
But I just want to, I guess in closing, you know, I think we had a pretty good session here, you know, we're never going to get everything right the first time. Just a couple of things, we're going to come back next year and probably tweak a little bit, but I think we're on the right, you know, path forward here, and hopefully, you know, our local communities, our schools, our cities are going to feel the benefits of the decisions made this year. And we've set ourselves up for a decade of growth and prosperity and just common sense budgeting, and I think that's going to go a long ways. Continuing, I think Minnesota's, you know, great track record of outpacing the rest of the country in economic growth and those sorts of indicators, educational performance and whatnot. So a great place to live, great place to work, let's just keep the ball rolling in the right direction here. So I guess, any other questions? Otherwise, I'll quit yapping before I filibuster your meeting here, so... All right. Well, thanks, folks, I appreciate it. And I'm actually off to another meeting, so I can't stay for the whole time tonight, but let me know if there's ever anything I can do for you.
It's kind of boring from here on, so...
Oh, is that right? Well, I don't think I put anybody to sleep yet, so, all right. Thank you so much, folks, really appreciate it.
Thanks, Senator.
Yeah, take care.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll move on to Item 7, which is the Consent Agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. Item A is adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending July the 12th, 2013. Item B is a meeting minutes for the July 2nd, 2013 City Council Meeting. Item C, Resolution 2026, adopting an investment policy. Item D, Resolution 2027, approving variance for 115 Fourth Street South. Item E, Resolution 2029, the Business Development Infrastructure Application. Item F is introduction and first reading of Ordinance 331, amending Chapter 152 of City Code to allow dynamic display signage. Item G is closed part of Hoffman Street for street dance. Item H is purchase new grass rig for the fire department. Item I is the debt service review. Item J, East Side 1 deferred assessment. Item K, the 2014 preliminary budget work session. And Item L, application for payment number two of the East Side Improvement Project. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down?
Aaron, is D, is that that Rob Restrol thing over there?
No.
No.
Yeah?
No, that's the...
That's E.
Brewster's.
That's the sign on the side of Brewster's.
Which one is the one, the old Lawrence Meeks building?
The Business Development Infrastructure.
Yep, that's E.
E.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I want to bring that down.
Okay, we'll bring that down, be item 8B. Anything else? If not, the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted, minus Resolution 2029, which has been brought down to item Council 8B.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Merrell, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Thank you, guys.
Councilmember Johnson.
And that moves us to council business this evening. That'll be Item A, Resolution 2028, accepting proposal on the sale of $2,610,000 of Government Bonds Series 2013 Alpha, providing for their issuance and pledging for the security thereof, special assessments on net real news and levying a tax for payment thereof.
Go ahead, George.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff. Councilmember McCusker will make sure this isn't boring.
Okay. All right. Sorry to...
However, when we talk municipal finance, it's hard. Well, back at your second council meeting in April, you approved a resolution setting this bond sale for today. And this bond sale is financing three items, the East Side Project, the Olmstead Medical Center, Street Extension Project, and the South of School Project, so for those three purposes. This morning at 10:30, we took financing bids on the, well, after the cover, it's the first page, we received two financing bids from BOSC and Baird. And BOSC is the low bidder based upon the far-right-hand column, which is the true interest cost, and that is the combination of their interest rate plus their compensation. They were the low bidder at a true interest cost of 3.24%. A little bit stronger than the Robert W. Baird bid, so, in fact, BOSC has been a buyer of other Cannon Falls bonds, so they must like your credit. As part of this process, I worked with your city staff on the assignment or reassignment of your city's bond rating. That rating is a double A minus with Standard &amp; Poor's. You've received that rating report, and they always, for Cannon Falls, they cite several key factors in the assignment to that rating. Certainly your location, proximity to Minneapolis-St. Paul, as well as Rochester, very strong general fund reserves, that's strongly noted in the report, as well as very good financial management. So those are items that go into the assignment of a double A minus bond rating, which according to Standard &amp; Poor's, is a very strong credit. So what I typically tell municipalities in the double A category is that that's reserved for very strong credits, so kudos to the City of Cannon Falls for a double A minus rating. Other key points about the financing is the call date, February 1st of 2020 is the call feature, so you have the opportunity on any date thereafter to refinance or prepay any debt. So scenario might be that you get a lot of prepaid assessments or assessments that are paid down over the years, and perhaps you build up a fund balance, you can prepay some bonds once you hit the call date. Or in the event that the bond market interest rates fall, the potential might be there to refinance. So the resolution in your packets approves all parameters of the sale locks in, the interest rates locks in, the call date, et cetera. The bonds are dated August 1st, the proceeds of the bond issue would be received on August 7th. So that's of note there. The other thing, Mr. Mayor, is that on the agenda, it refers to a bond issue sized at $2,610,000, and the updated bond amount is actually less than that, $2,575,000. That's on the handout that I gave to you. And the reason for the $35,000 drop is a combination of two items. One is the underwriter worked for less compensation than what we allowed for, which is good. The second item is the bonds were bid with a premium, meaning that the investors were willing to pay a little extra to get a better yield on the bonds. That, or that yield, or that premium, rather, comes as revenue to the city. So what we do is we typically downsize the issuance of bonds. So again, it was the combination of lower compensation and a bond premium reduces your bond amount by 35,000. Any other questions that I can address for the council?
Are there any questions? I think, you know, we, again, we've got a favorable interest rate as we move forward with these projects, and, you know, with today's market, it's hard to speculate. I mean, over the last few weeks, nobody knew which way the market was going to go, and so I mean, I think you guys have done a good job. I mean, our credit rating staying at a double A minus, you know, just continues to help, and, you know, that's good to the financial management, you know, by the city staff and, you know, and the council, so, you know, kudos to everybody. And if there's no further discussion, I'll take a motion approving the resolution authorizing the bond sale as presented.
So moved.
I will second that.
Have a motion by Merrell and a second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, George.
All right, that moves us on to Item 8B, which is Resolution 2029.
I just had some questions on that, Aaron. A couple of years ago, I got together with Tom, or with Greg, or somebody, I think when we were on the Planning Commission yet, and we talked about the building over there, the Rob Restrol thing, and I asked them at the time if they thought there was any way that we could put parking on the east end of that building, public parking, to make for trail access and stuff down there. I figured there, at that time, we figured there could be 10, 12 parking stalls there. And we talked about whether we could make up some kind of a lease agreement with the business over there, or if we could buy the land through EDA or something. So when I seen this, you know, it was going to come all the way out the sidewalk, and we're only going to go with a 26-foot deck coming up to that bridge, it kind of bothers me, because I think there could be a lot of good parking, so I called Tom this morning and talked to him about it to get his thoughts on it. And Tom also informed me that that bridge, which we all know is not rated very high as far as the quality, and it's kind of on the list that it has to be dealt with one of these days. And Tom was saying that if they do replace that bridge, they ain't necessarily going to replace it in the same spot, and their thoughts are that they might make a walking bridge out of that, or a trail bridge, or something. So Tom and I got talking, and I was also more concerned if they did that, that we could make a parking lot on the end of that bridge over there by that building then, for access to that trail, if it ended up being that way someday. So I guess I have concern that we're going to do all this curbing and stuff, and I'm kind of wondering if we are jumping the gun here and shouldn't put a little more thought if there's any way we could do parking on the east side of that building, if they would be willing to work with that, or if public work should talk about a little bit more. So what's your thoughts, Aaron?
Well, I do know that the business is growing very rapidly, and they need, they are going to be using that side over there. I mean, they will be for their own parking and access to the rear, to their loading dock and those sort of things.
Yeah, I know they need the access to the rear.
And, you know, on that, on the side as well, I mean, I know it goes out a little bit, but the part that is next to the building, they will have parking there too. I mean, they're going to, they want to use pretty much that whole area for what they need. I don't think that they're that interested in trying to work on any sort of deal to allow for any parking on their, on their side. I mean, they, their issue now is that people use their lot basically as a, you know, turn lane almost, and kind of cut through there, and they want it closed off so they can use it, and, you know, they can use it for either their parking, or storage, or whatever it is they kind of need on that side there. So I'm not sure that the business is really interested in giving up any of that land for any sort of public parking over there. And I'm also not sure we need it as far as public parking over there. You know, I haven't heard any real demand for parking in that area. There's, the trail access parking downtown is our main, really, point, so, you know, I'm not sure that that's something that, you know, one, the business is interested in, two, that I don't know if we're that really in need of it.
What about, I take it they want to move the curb out front, they no longer want the angle parking right in front of the building?
Right.
So, I mean, if they want more parking, then is there some reason that they're not leaving that angle parking all the way across there?
I think with the fixing of the curbs, it just makes sense with that street width to go with parallel parking, you know?
Yeah, I think it does too, but, I mean, they're going to get less parking that way is that they're, you know, they want to get a grass area in front or something.
Right, I mean, they want regular curb, and they, you know, we want to kind of clean up that whole thing as it goes through for stormwater, which we would do at some point when we finally fix that street, but we're just kind of, we're accelerating the stormwater portion of it now. I mean, when we do the street portion, whenever that is, I'm not sure what in the rotation that comes up, we won't have to tear up that stormwater part, we'll just do the pavement part of it and get that fixed, but that's basically the same idea that we would do if we were just, if we were doing the whole thing, is we'd move that curb out, kind of the way Greg really has it laid out, that was his plan, was is that we'll follow what we would usually do if we did a reconstruct at that site.
Now, Leroy, just to address some of this stuff, because the EDA has been working with these folks, and that's why we're trying for this grant money. Rob Bistro is, does not anticipate being a retail store, so, you know, cutting angle parking, maybe losing a couple of spots, won't really affect their business, and also if something long-term happens with the bridge, like they turn it into a walking bridge or something, and they want parking, we can always, as a city, explore the other side of Third Street, you know, where the old, that old elevator is and that kind of thing if we get to that point.
Right.
So, we don't really need to address it, but we had to address the stormwater issue and their uses because of their expansion coming on. So, we're hoping to get this grant, and that'll reduce the cost, as you saw, by about half, and then between the city and Rob Bistro, we're going to try and work something out to cover that if we get the grant.
Does that, that little holding pond they got over there, that'll actually kind of take up that end of the building there?
Yeah, it will, you know, and that, I guess, like you said, a curb bump out or whatever, there will be, yeah, there will be a stormwater, some sort of infiltration pond, something like that right there that will take up a decent portion of it, but...
And maybe you, I think you answered all my questions, but maybe you could bring up to Greg too that, and hopefully he's thought about this, is they have two storm sewers that are just down on Fourth Street down there, they're so weird, they're high, the water sometimes pools down there, so hopefully he's thinking about that too, why he's talking...
All right, I'll make sure that he's, we're talking about that with him.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? If not, Chair will take a motion to approve Resolution 2029, the Business Development Infrastructure Application.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Bill, second by Merle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That brings us on to reports. Justin? Tom? Chief?
A couple of things. You probably noticed over the, this last weekend, we had some water again coming up. Thankfully, it didn't get to the point where we had to worry about sandbagging or any of that, but we were monitoring it through the weekend. I anticipate, based on the latest information, that we will probably see this water remain for anywhere from a week to 10 days. There were some trip gates that went on the dam at its peak. Billsby was up about three feet from its summer stage. It's now going to drop three feet from normal summer to about its winter level before they can repair those trip gates. So, we've got a lot of water that's going to have to pass through our community before we see the levels go back down. I just want people to be aware of that. Nothing to be concerned of as far as threats to our property and stuff, however, the current is going to continue to be rather swift. I want to remind people not to be out, you know, on their sewer bridge, which is posted, by the way, for no trespassing, but they still go out there. And, you know, if they're waiting in to do fishing and stuff, just be very, very careful. We would prefer that they fish from the bank of the river until the water is back down to its normal level. And then on a second issue, last year with First Thursday in August, members of the Police Department did a dunk tank. We raised $800 for our local food shelf. We're planning to do that again this year. We would invite everybody to come down with your money. We will provide the balls to throw and the officers to get dunked. So, come on down, we'd love to beat last year's money raised this year. That's all I have.
Thanks. Aaron?
Okay.
Merle?
Nothing.
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 Leroy?
Nothing.
Well, one thing I've got is I got a letter from pet adoption of Cannon Valley thanking the mayor and the city council for their support, continued support, so thanks to everyone, and I did get a letter from a citizen about looking into a dog park, and I'll be contacting them, and I will be passing this letter on to Aaron's for a consideration in the future, because this is not the first time that somebody's brought it up, that they would like to see a dog park, because they've got areas for their dogs to run and stuff here in the city, so. Other than that, Chair will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.